Ms. Daley.
Ms. Daley.
I recommend that minutes pertaining to an individual's job performance or character, interim superintendent's job performance, remain sealed.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
I recommend that minutes pertaining to collective bargaining, NEA ESP contract negotiations, remain sealed until such time as an agreement has been reached.
Any discussion? Those in favor? All right. It's unanimous. Thank you.
I recommend that minutes pertaining to the privacy of students and their records, home instruction requests, remain sealed.
Any discussion on this topic? Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Luzon.
You ready, sir?
Yes, sir.
We had, sorry, six votes in an executive session. First vote was concerning executive session minutes of January 2nd, 2020, appointment of interim superintendent and interim superintendent's job performance. Nine in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, zero recusals. In favor: Abbott, Callahan, Dimoff, Juasty, Johnson, Luzon, Loyal, MacRusso, abstaining Day. Second vote, executive session minutes of December, I don't want to say the long date here, 10th, 2019, home instruction request. Nine in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, zero recusals. In favor: Abbott, Day, Dimoff, Juasty, Johnson, Luzon, Loyal, MacRusso, McAllister, abstaining Callahan. Third vote was a home instruction request. Ten in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. In favor: Abbott, Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Juasty, Johnson, Luzon, Loyal, MacRusso, McAllister. Third, fourth vote was a home instruction request. Ten in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. In favor: Abbott, Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Juasty, Johnson, Luzon, Loyal, MacRusso, McAllister. Fifth vote was a home instruction request. Ten in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. In favor: Abbott, Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Juasty, Johnson, Luzon, Loyal, MacRusso, McAllister. And the final vote was come out and visit you folks, returning to regular session. It was unanimous. Ten in favors, zero opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. Abbott, Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Johnson, Juasty, Luzon, Loyal, MacRusso, McAllister.
Thank you. Recognition.
Please join me in congratulating the following. High school senior Kyle Merritt for placing first in his weight class at the George Bossy Lowell Holiday Tournament in Lowell, Massachusetts, and for placing first in his weight class and being named most outstanding wrestler at the Chad Antarctic Memorial Tournament in Westerly. High school junior James Dougherty for placing first in his weight class at the Chad Antarctic Memorial Tournament in Westerly. High school junior Hannah Benavides for winning the 100 breaststroke at the Bayview Invitational Swim Meet at Brown University. High school senior Kate Powers for scoring her 1,000th point in her January 9th game against Cranston East. High school senior, I'm sorry, high school robotics team winners of the Connect Award. They will advance to the state competition. The following high school students for receiving honorable mention in the Rhode Island Scholastic Art Competition. Kathryn Dubay, photography. Luke Gillette, photography. Allison Klein, mixed media. Cameron Offe, ceramics and glass. And Trinity Y for mixed media. November Employees of the Month. Cali teacher Danielle Bruno and Richmond teacher Sherri McHugh. December Employees of the Month. Hope Valley teacher Janine Mankoff and Hope Valley teacher assistants Sally Andriazi and Lauren Serenjeoni. Amy and Kyle Rude from RPE Disposal for their continued support of the district's Gingerbread Express program and annual sponsorship of the middle school holiday basketball tournament. And the following high school wrestlers took first place in their respective weight class at the Griswold Invitational. Wade Husing, 113. Kyle Merritt, 145. Dominic Bonanno, 152. James Dougherty, 170. And Nate Marchionne, 195. Kyle Merritt was named most outstanding wrestler of the tournament as well. Samantha Snyder, grade 11, and Kyle Merritt, grade 12, have been selected as Rhode Island Interscholastic League Students of the Month for Charahope.
Excellent. Thank you. Public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to provide comments to the school committee. So we encourage any of you who wish to speak to stand up and use the microphone and let us know, as long as it's not on the agenda. Perfect. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and what town you're from.
Hi, I'm Sheila Grover from Richmond. I just have a question. I didn't see it on the agenda. Is there a plan for what we're going to do to choose a new superintendent for next year or officially name or what's happening with that? I just was wondering if that's something we could find out.
Yeah, so it's not on the agenda, so we can't go in depth, but we do plan to have a public discussion on how to proceed with respect to appointing a formal superintendent. We're targeting February 11th, which is next school committee meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anyone else like to speak? No? Okay. Thank you. This brings us to policy.
The first policy is the health services policy. It's a revision. I recommend approval of the revisions to the health services policy. This has been reviewed by the legal counsel and the district physician.
Motion and a second to approve the revision of the health services policy. Discussion. Marat.
So I believe the policy as a whole is no problem for me. However, part of it is the head lice policy. And so we've been, I do have a child in Richmond Elementary School currently enrolled, and obviously I've been hearing in person about these issues. And also I believe the parents of the Richmond Elementary students have sent all the school committee members quite a few of emails voicing their concerns about the current policy that we have as far as it comes to the head lice treatment. So personally, I read through the policy and I understand that it adheres to the Rhode Island Department of Education written policy, but I believe it's wrong. So I do believe that having a child in the class shared with at least approximately 20 other peers, it's quite impossible, as the policy recommends, to keep them away from having contact. And as such, the document also states that the head lice is hugely contagious, so it spreads quickly. And it does bring a lot of troubles to the families who are affected. Living in the area where we are, it's really kind of hard for people, especially for working parents, to accommodate a child that has head lice. We're talking about potentially a week out of school, daily treatment, all the inconveniences that come with it. So I was going to just say that I will vote against it, but I think we can do better if we improve our policy by adopting a requirement that the child has to stay home until the head lice is treated, probably, and the school nurse will certify it. However, I do understand that with our policy of counting the missed days in school, that's going to be a problem for a lot of families. So I would make another recommendation that if such is the case for this child to stay home, that we give these excused missed days. So they will all be counted towards 30 days or something like that. So a child will not be penalized for just missing the school for that reason.
Kathryn.
So I received the emails about head lice. We've had head lice go through my house. It's no fun. It's difficult to treat. However, I am in a position where I am mindful and I treat my child. And so my child, I think she missed one day with head lice. My concern with making this policy more stringent than it is, is that now we have some children who maybe go home to a parent who doesn't have the bandwidth to treat head lice the way that it should be. And now we have a child who is probably getting lots of good attention at school, being out of school at home, and there's no guarantee that that child is getting the attention warranted, A, for the head lice, or B, in general. So I would be very hesitant to make this policy more stringent because I think we're taking some of our perhaps less advantaged kids and keeping them out of school more. And that's, I think, the exact opposite of what we want to do. So I appreciate that a parent has to go with the child to take a look with the school nurse to see if there's head lice present. Even that, I questioned if that would be an undue burden on some of our families, but I think it's a good step to try to contain the problem. Head lice is awful. It's a nuisance. It spreads like wildfire, but it is not a life-threatening disease. And I think it's good to have policies with different radiations for things like that.
Clay, and then Bill.
Was this update to the policy developed in conjunction with the Richmond School Improvement Team?
This was not. This was in conjunction with researching the Rhode Island Department of Health's head lice policy and guiding principle. I did share this policy with the principal of Richmond because of the concerns at that school, and she thought it was a good policy. What I found in digging into this issue is we didn't have a policy. We didn't have a written policy or protocol. And when I went and asked from honestly each of our schools for the letter they sent home in the instance of lice, they had different ones. So my concern was to first get a clear policy and guideline established, and then the next thing I'll do is work with the nurses to work on a letter that they'll all use to send home. But I did consult with the doctor, Manlove, and she sent me, I have attached it in the package, but information that she thought was helpful and education related to the issue, and she also looked at the policy.
Bill.
I see our solicitor is here. Has he had an opportunity? I'd like to have him speak to that because I have some feelings both ways on this.
I have read the policy. I endorse the policy. The policy is based on science, not emotion. It addresses the concerns that Mrs. Juasty aptly described. This is not my first rodeo with lice. I've seen it in other school committees, with other school committees tackling the issue. And at the end of the day, science is what provides the answer here. This policy is based on science from the Department of Health, and I urge you to support the superintendent and this policy because it's based on science.
John, is there an example of a district that restricted kids, and then what was the outcome?
Wes Warwick went through a dialogue the way that you're having. However, Wes Warwick went through it for weeks with, I don't want to say hundreds, but tens of parents at school committee meetings arguing the pros and cons of it. And ultimately Wes Warwick ended up with a policy similar to the one that you're adopting here. Again, it's based on science from the Department of Health. I don't pretend to be an entomologist, which I learned is someone who studies insects, but, you know, I do trust the experts when the experts say that if a child is showing nits, they're past, you know, their most contagious phase.
I was going to give an opportunity for Bill. Did you have a follow-up question or you just wanted John's input?
Like I said, I was undecided, and I have a lot of faith in John's ability to direct us in the right direction.
Agreed. Lynda.
Just a question about moving forward with the, are you included in our packet, the handout or the family, from the family doctor? How is that going to, is that going to be distributed only when the child has lice? Are you going to do a sort of whole school kind of?
I think that information should be distributed annually, just like we do related to the flu or other information for parents, so that they have just information about head lice as an issue and just as a regular practice, as part of education. But in the policy, it does say that if there is more than one case confirmed in the class, then the parents of the students in that class will be notified.
Okay.
And that's the letter I'm talking about that I want the nurses to come to agreement on as to what that would look like.
Yeah, I'm just more or less, you know, about the education.
Yes.
You know, maybe helping parents, you know, know what it's about and how to deal with it if they get it in their family. Thank you.
Ms. Luzon, and then Ms. McCausess.
I just have a couple of questions because I want to learn about this. So John. On the Rhode Island Department of Health, on their handout, recommendations, a child with an active head lice infestation should remain in class but be discouraged from close direct contact with others. How do we do that at the elementary level?
And I think, and I hope that we do that on a regular basis. And that's how, for example, and I don't pretend to be an elementary teacher, in addition to not being an entomologist, but teachers arrange their classrooms in certain ways. They group the desks in certain ways. They arrange activities in certain ways, so.
Which, I can see that, but I also see possibly exclusion too.
I understand that, and I think that, again, it comes back to, I'm a believer that teachers manage their classrooms, and we need to let teachers manage their classroom, and I think that teachers can effectuate this.
And the science part, it states that the shampoo is a pesticide.
Correct.
Are they 100% reliable after the first treatment, or is it continuous treatment?
That, having never been treated for head lice, I can't, that question I can't.
I can.
Ms. McCausess.
Right, you could.
You know, it's all in handling it and watch, the school nurse watches it, and they may have to have reapply.
So is it reoccurring because of reintroduction, or is it reoccurring because you didn't eliminate the first time?
Well, I totally believe the education piece for children, and it's part of their education to learn how to take care of themselves. And there's lots of things that they can do to, you know, when they come in, they put their hats in their sleeve and their mittens in their pocket, and hair is tied back during these months because it's very contagious, but it is what it is. There are, for some people who couldn't afford the treatment, we might want to think about being able to help them.
That's a good idea.
I like that. All right. Kathryn, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I don't want to make light of it. It is a problem. It is, you know, my daughter has hair the length of my hair, and getting rid of it is arduous for sure, but at the end of the day, it's an inconvenience. And again, I'm thankful that I can have a child who will sit and cooperate and let me brush her hair for two hours. You know, I don't know that everybody's in that position. So I like the education piece in terms of explaining to parents, it's this time of year, every year we send out a reminder about lice, and this is how you can help prevent the spread of it. I think that's a great idea. There are some non-pest, I didn't use pesticides when I treated my daughter. There are non-pesticide options out there, educating parents to that effect, but I just, I would not advocate for keeping a child out of school more than we have to.
Understood. Craig, and Ms. McCausess.
I'm just going to add to what you've said. My wife, being a first grade teacher, learned many years ago that a lavender shampoo.
A tea tree.
Okay. Ms. McCausess.
Is it possible to amend this so you could add the piece for possibly helping families who couldn't afford a treatment? Is that possible?
The school committee can make, any member of the school committee can offer an amendment. You need a second, and then there needs to be a vote on the amendment after the motion is on the floor. Is the motion on the floor yet?
It is.
So any member of the school committee can make a motion, make an amendment. You need a second, and then there's a discussion on the amendment and a vote.
Okay.
All right, so.
She just said her first line. She said.
You're going to make it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
She does.
Yes, ma'am. You can make it whenever you like.
I'd like to make a motion to add to perhaps number three, where the school nurse will provide information, that we also add that the school nurse will have the resources to aid needy families with supplies. Is that?
How about if, how about we just task it so that if the family is unable to afford lice treatment, the school will step in and support?
The vote.
Second.
Motion and a second to amend the policy to include the statement. I forgot what it was already.
If the family is unable to afford lice treatment, the school district will step in with assistance.
Thank you. Discussion. Bill.
How do we determine? We have a large outstanding bill every year with our food service program because people can afford to pay, they just don't want to pay. So I'd be very reluctant to support this without having some way to verify that there is a need for us as taxpayers to support people that in some cases maybe just don't give a damn.
John, you have a position?
Sure. One way to do that is that you have to be free and reduced. Free or reduced lunch eligible.
Exactly.
If you're not free or reduced lunch eligible, then you can pay for it on your own.
So Lisa, you had your hand up.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, I figured that's what he was going to say, so I'm in favor of that as well. I'm sorry, was there a hand up, George?
This is sort of the element, if it is any element, it's covered by medical insurance?
I don't know. I've never.
Prescription, probably. Not over the counter.
Rob. Yeah, sorry. I know, I'd like to give the committee first crack at that.
Robin Woodmansey, Richmond. Thank you very much for addressing that as a Richmond parent. It definitely was difficult. That was going to be my first recommendation, is if we could provide that to those. But in addition to that, I think some of the concern that some parents have had is that maybe it's not being treated at home as well, because you can treat the head, but if it's, if you're going home and that area isn't treated, you know, then you're just not solving the problem. Can we also reach out to our local services to see if they're able to educate people on ways to treat it at home, which I know is in there, but also, I mean, that can get expensive and costly. Like you, things that can't be washed have to get thrown away. It's not the easiest procedure. So that's just mine. I don't know how far we can go to do that, but I think that's a big concern parents have and why it's recycling.
Agreed.
You know, I think that things that a building principal could do would be things like home visits. They could see if there's any agencies already working with the family and reach out to them to communicate. And a lot of times those types of agencies can provide support. So if, with permission with the parent, you know, speaking with any other community services that might be available to help out. And I think when you read that, it says if it's persistent, then the building principal will consult with the district physician. Also, the district physician might have other suggestions and ideas which could help the family.
George.
My wife and I coincidentally had a discussion about this topic unrelated to the agenda. And her, she insisted that the only way to get rid of it is to kill the eggs.
Thank you. Further, Bill.
Are we going to amend that? That to qualify for free and reduced lunches will be the criteria? Or are we just going to assume this?
For families that are eligible, maybe?
I think it should be just, we simplify it, and I would recommend that we put it into.
Let's, let's.
Because we would document that in other policies as well, so it makes sense to have that.
So you want to include that in the amendment?
I'm sorry. Just one second.
Typically, you know, you, a student that's free and reduced, they may not want to, like, they might not need that service though. So the only thing by putting that in specifically, then you're almost implying if they are free and reduced, then they can get it for free. So I think that, you know, we always use that as a general guideline when a family, when we know our families, I know our principal knows our families and which families are in need, and they know the free and reduced status, and they know they're going to reach out to those people that they think can't afford it. So that would be my only thought. I think by saying that it's just unable to afford, you know, we know, we have that in other policies too, where students can't afford something, and the school and the district steps in.
Okay.
Whether it be field trips or, you know, a lot of different things.
But I also know that our people know our people, and I would not want us to get into a situation, as I said earlier, where people are taking advantage of the taxpayers in this district by turning around and trying to get it. If there's nothing to prevent them from getting it without having free and reduced lunches in our policy. This is a small community. People know what's going on in Charleston from Hope Valley and vice versa, so.
Right.
To turn around and have someone take advantage of us like they've been taking advantage of us in the school lunch programs really riles me up and a lot of other people in this community.
Marat.
So I have two questions. First one is, do we know how much does one dosage?
Three dollars and 66 cents on the envelope.
Okay, cool. And so that may partially answer my second question, which is, are we even allowed legally to distribute? Is this over the calendar or is this prescription?
It's over the calendar.
It's over the calendar. I have suggested warning.
Thank you.
A suggested warning might be if they've demonstrated a financial need.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So in terms of, John, you go.
We need to first vote on the amendment and then vote on the whole policy.
Right, but if we are going to include additional language in the original amendment.
Is anyone? I would ask the committee if anyone objects to the additional language. If nobody objects, then just include it.
Does anybody object to the additional language of demonstrated financial need? I see no one objecting. Thank you. We'll incorporate it in the redraft. So any further discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, the red box, I fully understand it.
Good idea.
School nurse will have resources to aid needy families with supplies. And Ryan then said if family is unable to afford lice treatment, the school district will step in with assistance if they demonstrate a financial need. So it's what Ryan's statement is the motion of the amendment.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Those in favor of the amendment? All right. It is unanimous with respect to the amendment. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the revisions to the health policy as amended? Marat.
I do get the emotional side.
I do get the emotional side of it. We don't wanna punish, and I agree with it wholeheartedly, I do agree, but my feeling is that we go into, we're gonna, we're gonna to at least inconvenience a whole lot of families with this Lice issue instead of, I don't wanna say forcing, but maybe asking the families who introduced this into class to deal with it with the help of the school district if needed, so. So I have a feeling that even if I put a motion on the floor to amend the policy to, you know, ask the child to stay at home until it's treated, it's not gonna get a whole lot of support, so I'm just gonna say that I'm not, I'm gonna vote against the policy as amended.
Understood. My, my position on that, you know, I dealt with this in my house and I think I was leaning towards that as well, but my understanding of the position, we would, we would put ourselves in a liability position with respect to the legal aspect of banning a child from school for Headlice. So I'm not gonna be in support of that unless, I mean, actually, no, I'm not gonna be in support of that irrespective of that. So Catherine.
Just a final word, it's, it's not emotional. It would be emotional if I said, because it's been in my house, I don't want it in anybody else's house. That's the emotional piece which I, which I hear. It's an educational piece, it's an equity piece.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the health or approval of the health policy as amended? Those in favor of approving the health policy as amended? Those opposed? Right, thank you, sir. Well, we got through the first one. Second one is, policy is section, or letter B, personal management system. I have not had a chance to go through this. I don't know if the rest of the committee can speed read, but I would, I would recommend we table this until the next meeting.
I do have a question though, Chair.
Yes, sir.
John's here. If we table it, John has to come back, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, I will briefly explain. This policy is based on the changes that were enacted by the legislature last spring that took effect in January. And what they do is they take the school committee out of the employment process almost completely, not 100 percent. You still will hear grievances from, actually, you don't even hear grievances from the support staff. You'll still be responsible for doing teacher terminations. But other than that, it moves the locus of the final decisions to the superintendent and you in turn keep the superintendent, you're the people who employ the superintendent. It also empowers principals and this is gonna be a real challenge for our principals because with power comes great responsibility. And they are gonna be responsible for making decisions in the days of saying, oh, I got Ms. Jones was first grade teacher, I had no say in it, you know, don't blame me that she's, you know, nobody in her class can read. Those days are gonna be over because employment decisions are subject to collective bargaining agreements are gonna be made at the school level. And that means, for example, all hiring with a recommendation to the superintendent. And the way I see this rolling out is going to be that the superintendent will be hard-pressed not to support that recommendation. This policy sets forth procedures by which school improvement teams, which are gonna be empowered to work with the principal to make those recommendations, how they operate, how they're to be constituted, and it provides a template for principals to follow.
You support the policy as drafted?
I do.
Okay.
And I will say, first draft of this was done by Superintendent Ritchie during the second and third week, actually, he did multiple drafts of this during the second and third weeks of December. He provided it to Jane and to myself around the 20th or the 19th and I literally took it home to read over the, over Christmas. I know that Jane had input too, that she was not able to sit down with Superintendent Ritchie. What we did was we took his two or three drafts and I reviewed them for issues of legal compliance and Jane reviewed it for educational issues. And what we're presenting is primarily based on what he wrote. We just, you know, sanded around the edges.
Okay. I'm gonna, I would still like to table it so that I can read it. I think this has a huge impact on how the school committee operates, but I, I would like to do it through a motion to table so that the school committee, if the majority wished to proceed, there's, there's the option to do it. Yes, sir.
That's why I asked for John initially.
I understand.
So he doesn't have to come back, but I do have a question, John.
Sure. And I appreciate, by the way, Mr. Luzon, you know, it's a bit of a hike to get down here. But on the other hand, if you, if you wish me to be here next time and if you do it at the 11th, I think I'm going to be here for the discussion on the superintendent selection process to explain my experiences in other districts. For example, I have an interim superintendent as we speak in Pataca. So if you do it on the 11th, I'll be here.
Okay. There is no appeal process.
You have a standard appeal process that the school committee has separately adopted that applies to all decisions of the school department. We have an appeals policy. If you, you would like to have the appeals process expressly referred to, that's a great suggestion and we'll be happy to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we make a motion to table this until the next meeting?
Second.
Motion and a second to table until February 11th. Any discussion? Those in favor? Thank you, that was unanimous. This brings us up to letter C, under policy. Jane.
Okay, this is the voluntary change of elementary school district policy. It's a revision. I recommend approval of the revisions to this policy to better align with our promotion of our elementary specialty schools. And it has been reviewed by legal counsel and also the elementary principals did look at it and give input.
So move.
Motion and a second to approve the revisions to the voluntary change of elementary school district policy. Discussion. Craig and then Clay.
Section two, number one, by May 1st of every school year, the superintendent of schools will determine the number of spaces in each school available to elementary specialty school, choice schools, and parents will be notified. So hypothetically, you have three first grade classes. Each class could have 22 kids. They may, you may say, well, there's room for one kid per class. But we're not officially gonna know from that given community what their population is till October 1st. So how are we gonna address that?
So when those spots are determined, it's, there's gonna be a very conservative approach, especially in this initial time. What we have to think through is that the change in this policy allows for the student to stay in that school till they graduate. So they, if it was kindergarten, they could be there for quite a few years. So we have to project and think about what is that enrollment gonna be over the next few years. We would not do it in the case of 21 students, I could tell you now. We would not say that there's an opening in that classroom. You know, I'm, we have some classrooms that are historically lower, like size 14 or 15. Those might be the ones I would be looking at and only if there's a need and it's gonna be helpful because maybe in another school, the classes are over 21, 22 for a certain grade level. And we were trying to look for more balance. So we'd be very strategic and very conservative about the number of spots that we, we put out there.
So follow the flip side. So little Timmy is going to school A because that was his choice. And the first couple of years, mom and dad, mom and dad have no problem transporting and so on and so forth. Then employment changes and now little Timmy has to go back to his home district school and he's pushing the numbers. So how do we address that?
You know, same way as if a student moved in the district in any town or, and, you know, we would have to address it. If they, if that's the town they live in, then that's where they have the right to go to school.
Okay.
I would briefly respond, the Charahoe Act requires what Jane just said.
Okay. Clay and then Lisa.
So I like this for two reasons. One, I think it provides an opportunity to attract students that might otherwise go to a charter school. And it also gives us a way to enhance the Charahoe Act and try to balance classes between the towns. And so uncomfortable how it's written, but it's quite a tight timeline in terms of, and probably a couple iterations to go through this to, to look at this from how do we staff it, how do we budget for it? So I don't know if there's any way to move this process up, but I'm happy with the way it is.
So the reason I have May 1st is that's after the school budget passes. So again, it's gonna be based on what we have in our budget and need and then based on those classroom sizes, we'll say and identify where are the spots available, but based on what we've already agreed upon and budgeted for what the needs are in the district. So does that help? So that, the idea of it is to do it after the budget passes and that's why the May deadline.
Lisa.
So both of the reasons that I stated, I too support this. I think it's moving us in the right direction. My one concern is actually in item 1.1. I'm not in support of the added language in red, especially the component about discipline records because the fact of the matter is we are a public school. We're not charter school, we're not specialty school, not a school, not charter school. And so I'm not comfortable with saying that if your discipline was not satisfactory, you no longer have the opportunity to engage in specialized learning. That is going to present issues of equity for students that have behavioral needs, emotional needs, mental health concerns, changes in families, dynamic dynamics. It just says to me that you, you're only entitled to this benefit, this specialized schooling, if your discipline is satisfactory and that's just not reasonable for elementary age children. And we're a public school. That's not criteria I'm willing to accept. Everything else but that, yes, I just feel like that's, that's placing criteria on a child that we wouldn't do for any other school. So if, if we're talking about this level of discipline issue where they're going to be expelled or suspended, of course. But if simply they can no longer attend the health and wellness specialty school or the, or Charleston is a discipline that's satisfactory, that, that's not, that's not what we do here.
Bill.
I, I love that last sentence because this is to benefit Charahoe, but it's also to benefit the parent. And if they can't instill enough discipline and things that need to be accountable, then we shouldn't be putting that burden onto a school that's not required to educate them anyway. Charahoe is, school district is required to educate them by the Charahoe Act, which says they attend a school in the, in the towns that they pay taxes in, basically. So I, I, I don't see why we should be concerned about parents not being able to control their children.
Clay, I'm sorry.
I'm deeply offended by that statement and I need to address it. So this is the second time now we're talking about parenting related to school and children's performance growth and development. There's comments made about Headlice and that we are dangerously tracking towards only certain kinds of students and parents get Lice. And this is a further continuation of that. Parent discipline alone does not determine how a child is developing and growing in class. There are organic developmental issues and milestones that could be impacting students' ability to learn far beyond their parents, who are all kids all the time, not some of the kids when their parents are doing their thing.
Clay.
I was gonna ask the Chair to clarify whether Lisa made a motion on item 1 dot 1.
She has not made a motion.
I make a motion to strike the red language in 1.1.
Second.
Motion and a second to amend the document by striking the language in red in section 1.1. That is now open for discussion. Sorry, Craig, I jumped, jumped the queue on you.
Mrs. McCallister, I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying on one, but I don't agree with the statement made to Mr. Degg because he's still entitled to his opinion. And the way it was delivered was inappropriate. So I'm just saying, I, I do agree with it, but you know, even if a kid gets suspended, it's still, shouldn't be applied because whether you get, one, it's extended school day or if you do, whatever type of punishment you receive, I, I still think they should be entitled. So, thank you.
So just as one comment I would like to make on this, sorry to jump in front of both of you. I, kinda going back and forth, I originally was leaning very much in terms of agreement, was striking it. I, I, I agree with the sentiment that you expressed. I do feel though that the, the balance of a classroom is important and we have to be able to gauge whether or not the destination of the child is going to be resourced appropriately for those child, for that child's needs, especially if, for instance, if you have a paid girl assistant in Richmond, but you don't have it in the school that that child would move to. I think that even though there's a desire to move there, that it makes sense to apply some scrutiny to that and say, look, in terms of the behavior that your child's exhibiting, we're better able to provide those resources at the school in which they're currently being educated. And I, I think that that sentence, you know, provides that discretion by the administration in terms of proving it. So that's kind of how I interpreted the intent of it, but I'm, I'm looking forward to continued discussion because I am being swayed a little bit. Yes, ma'am.
The addition of that language actually came in consultation with the principals and the reason was, in very, very few cases, there are students who, because they're not going to their home school, the school in their, with their neighborhood and with their friends, they start to exhibit sometimes issues and that has shown along with their attendance has, there have been, again, not many issues of this, but there's those isolated ones where there's issues with their attendance and perhaps if they were back in their own school, in their own town, where they could have a bus, then they wouldn't have an attendance issue. And because of the attendance issue, that's causing issues when they go to another school. Could cause issues with their performance. It could cause issues with their relationships with other students. So just from the experience that the principals have had with the voluntary process over the past few years, their input would be really be advantageous for, you know, one or two students to not repeat and come back to the school the next year. But their, their thought was more the interest of the student themselves.
So Catherine and then Linda.
So to, to Lisa's point, and then I have a clarifying question too. I think sometimes if you take a child and give that child a different opportunity, you see a wholly different child. And it might just be that one, that a child who isn't doing particularly well in one elementary school could find that he or she does very well in another elementary school simply because it matches their interests, which is very little to do with parenting at times. Who is making this decision? Who ultimately makes the decision of who gets to move? Is it just the superintendent?
Yes, but I, when I did this last summer, when we had people that voluntarily made requests, I did that in consultation of looking at the numbers of classes and also in speaking with the principal, too. When I, before I made that decision, I would check with them and just get their input.
Thank you.
Linda.
Well, I started thinking that we were all assuming why it was put in there. So, that was going to be my question. You just explained why that statement was put in, in consultation with the principals. I guess what I'm looking at is, if a student's having some difficulty at one school, why wouldn't this student have difficulty? It is homeschool, so to me, I don't know why that would be different. We just would address it. So, I don't, I guess, I don't, I don't know why it would make a difference, I guess, is my, my comment.
Lisa, and then, Ms. McCausess.
So, to, to look back to the language. So, I, I don't disagree, Jane, that there should be consultation with the principal. It should be the parent consultation with the principal, certainly the, right? We're talking about today. However, when we really drill out the language here, I'm not comfortable with what this language reflects for our district. The first sentence actually covers most of what you're talking about. It's for transfer applications for one school year only. The word "application" means there is a process to determine whether or not the student, right? Is, wherever that process is, going to be accepted there. So, there's already an application. I'd like to see what the application looks like, what that, what those questions are and how that process is determined. So, the next sentence talks about the reapplication. So, now the student has been there, according to this, the student has been present for a full year. The parent seems to feel it's a good idea and a good fit because they're reapplying, according to this language. And they can be denied this because of a disciplinary issue. That remains, that language is not right. We can rework it. You can, we can take it back. We can certainly add consultations in. But the way this has stepped out, the student has applied, has been approved, the parent is reapplying, and may be told no based on unsatisfactory discipline, whatever that means to you.
So, if we're speaking to 1-1, which is at the top part with the voluntary transfer, all they're really losing is their priority over new applicants. So, actually, the way the policy works, it's, if you go down to number five, for that, this one, if there's more applications received than there are openings, a policy of first come, first served will prevail. And so, you know, all, but if you're reapplying, you get priority. So, you get first crack. So, you're losing your priority. That's really all that's happening, based on the attendance and discipline records remain satisfactory.
So, all of our waiting, that it's unnecessary. It's really unnecessary, and it could be her fault.
Ms. McCausess, sorry.
Can we legally exclude a child from public school?
We, we, no, no, no. They would still be able to attend their school, the school in which, the town that they live in. This is to go to another school within the Charahoe District.
But it's Charahoe, so it's falling to the same, I think.
Uh, you want to comment on this?
So, based on the Charahoe Act, they, they go to the school that they live in. But we have this policy, which was put in place a few years ago, that voluntarily, they could, they could volunteer to go to a different school in the district. So, what this is about is, it's, it's year to year. They're never guaranteed it more than one year at a time. And so, every year, they have to reapply, no matter what, on that first part.
Linda.
Could the language be amended in a more positive way? Like, as long as the student, it's an appropriate placement for the student, as long as it's showing that the student, you know, rather than put it in more of a negative? Like, I mean, because there's a process, right? And so, at that point, someone's going to be looking at whether or not the student is being successful, and it's an appropriate, it's been an appropriate move. So, I don't know if that makes more sense rather than, you know, negative suggestion.
Yeah, I think that, at least my interpretation of the positioning of, of the, the motion is that the, the language is unneeded. Because it's addressed in the application process. And because of that, I think I, and I understand your articulation on the other piece of it. So, I would recommend not, but I'm not going to stop you.
No, it's okay. It was just a suggestion.
Any additional discussion on the amendment, which is to strike? So, let me clarify on this. Are we striking the entire, the second sentence in its entirety, or just the red language? Or the red letter?
The motion was to strike the red language, the added language.
Okay, fair enough.
Strike the black language and go over to the white.
Perfect. Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment to strike the red language in 1-1? Yes, sir.
Any way we could split that sentence, I think? Because I think two different issues. Attendance versus discipline.
But we also have an attendance policy.
I understand. But we're applying those together. Somebody tell me I'm wrong.
No.
I think we'd have to vote on the original amendment, and then you could vote on the amendment if you wanted to.
I, I think so, but Clay.
I, I think the safety valve we have is, the superintendent has the ultimate discretion in this case. So, I don't think we have to call out anybody. She's going to make decisions based on what's best for the whole district. And it may be balancing students. It may not even be performance of kids in specific schools.
I agree with that. So, I would recommend that we proceed with voting on the amendment. And then, if there's additional amendments, committee members make them, and then we'll move on to the policy itself. So, any further discussion on the amendment to the motion, which is to remove the red lettering in section 1.1? No further discussion? Those in favor of striking that language? Let me know when you're ready. Opposed?
Okay.
Abstaining? Thank you.
Six to four.
Six to four. The amendment carries. Any further discussion on the amended policy? No? Those in favor of the policy as amended? It's unanimous. Thank you all. This brings us to business.
All right, we have some students here. Permission to establish UNICEF Club at Charahoe High School. I recommend approval of the request to establish the UNICEF Club at the high school. We have teacher Diane Lee Dussette has agreed to serve as a volunteer advisor for this club. And we have some students here to answer any questions if, if there are any. There's no funding required.
So, you recommended it?
Yes, I recommend.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and a second to establish a UNICEF Club at Charahoe High School. This is open for discussion. Linda. It was Craig and Catherine was the second. Linda.
Could you tell us a little bit about the UNICEF Club?
Um, yeah, most certainly. So, I'm Alexis Wisencie, and this is Kylie. We're not only the founders, but the president and vice president of the club. So, yeah, we're going to give you a little bit of rundown of what we're trying to accomplish. So, UNICEF is an acronym, actually, for the United Nations International Children's Emergency Fund. And the goal of UNICEF basically is to do some of the same things we try to do here at Charahoe, but on a more global scale. They try, and through fun, through fundraising, they try and combat different issues that are currently facing the world, like human trafficking and the need for clean water, the right to education in third-world countries and all that kind of thing. So, here at Charahoe, we would like to establish a club to help us stand out from a lot of the other high schools in Rhode Island. Because there, with our addition of a club, there would only be three clubs within Rhode Island. One at Johnson and Wales, one at Brown University. And then, here would be the only high school in Rhode Island to actually have a club. So, that would really set us apart, not only globally, but within Rhode Island, as something different in making waves towards coming changes.
And I also think it's important to mention, like, I originally, over the summer, was looking to donate some money, and I just discovered UNICEF. And I was like, "Wow, this is so cool. I'd love to join this." But I was shocked that, like Kylie said, there wasn't a club. So, I came up with the idea to start one. And we've actually had numerous people demonstrate interest, at least over 15. And, yeah, so, I mean, the opportunity for community services there. And this adheres to not only Expectation 7 and 8 of the graduation portfolio, because, for example, collaboration. I mean, we're hosting fundraisers, and we'll be working together. We'll be having a presence at artistry, hopefully. And, of course, global citizenship as, yeah, we're educating the community about different pressing issues like vaccinations and such.
Definitely, we've had a lot of interest displayed to us and a lot of really great ideas for specific things coming up. So, thank you all for your consideration of our club. Is there any questions you guys have, further questions?
Mr. Luzzon.
I just have a statement. Back in the 60s and 70s, when I was a kid, it was like almost mandatory when you went out trick-or-treating to collect for UNICEF. Mrs. McKenzie remembers those days. I just think it's fantastic.
Yeah, that was something that we tried to actually do, but because of, like, it was the start of the school year. This was like something I developed in, like, late August, so there was just not enough time.
It doesn't have to be that timeframe. Year round is fantastic.
Further questions for these students? Those in favor of approval of the creation and establishment of the UNICEF Club at Charahoe High School? Opposed? Abstaining? Opposed? Okay.
It passes.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. This brings us to business, letter B.
I recommend a slight revision to the 2020 school committee meeting schedule. To align with the Charahoe, Charahoe Act requirements, revision is needed as adoption of the budget must occur within 30 days of the referendum. Therefore, you will need to adopt the FY '21 budget during your meeting on March 24, 2020, and not on March 10, 2020.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the revision to the school committee meeting schedule. Any discussion on this? Yes, sir.
Uh, it's not, it's, I just wanted to mention that from March 24th, I will not be able to attend. I will not be in the country. So, just giving you the information right of hand. Also, on the email.
Cool, thank you. Further discussion on this topic? Those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you all.
Next, I'd like to recommend approval of the 2020, 2021 school calendar. Unfortunately, due to the late date of Labor Day, along with the need to close on primary and election days this year, we will have to begin school before Labor Day in order for seniors to meet attendance requirements.
So, move.
Motion and a second to approve the 2020, 2021 school calendar. Discussion.
Jane, does this calendar still align with all the good work that Catherine did on aligning this, our school calendar with the other surrounding towns?
This, this is aligned with the work that was done a few years ago, where we changed the February vacation. And the April vacation does, I, I have shared this with all the other districts, and the ones that have gotten back to me, it does align with their April vacation.
Excellent point. Further discussion? Those in favor?
Go, girl.
It's, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Letter D.
I recommend approval of the children's theater curriculum. Just a brief overview, this is a course that the school committee approved as a new course about two years ago. It's part of our performing arts program, CTE program. And it will start being offered next year. So, that's why we needed to be able to develop the curriculum for it, which was done this school year. So, it's just for one course.
Recommend it?
Yes, I recommend approval.
Motion and a second to approve children's theater curriculum. Discussion. Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Letter E.
Okay, next, I recommend approval of the high school program of studies.
So, move.
Motion and a second to approve the Charahoe High School Program of Studies. Discussion. Jane.
So, the, in the program of studies, you're going to see red text is new text. And then, there are strike-throughs to indicate information that's being deleted. There are four main changes in this program of studies compared to last year's. One is student internship program language is now in here, which aligns to our school district policy on student internship. That's also true with language in the new program of studies that aligns to our secondary grading policy. In the area of world language curriculum, you'll see quite a few revisions. That's because this fall, you approved a new curriculum, a revised curriculum in world language. And so, now, the changes in the program of studies just reflect the language and the revised curriculum from this fall. And then, the last piece, which is new, is there's a new document, which really delineates the bilingual and dual-language pathways. So, it's not a program, like a career tech program, but it's a pathway, and it shows how students can get the seal of bilinguacy. And I believe that's on page 71, but let me double-check, because some pages changed as we went through the process of this work. So, just let me get there real quick. And. It's on page 72. And even though that, that really should be in red, that is a whole new chart. So, page 17, 72 is a new edition. And that's it.
Thank you. Questions? Catherine.
So, I appreciate that this is a lot of work, and I appreciate it. And I think this is another step in helping all of our students choose Charahoe, because that school choice, too, is choosing your resident school district to attend. So, I appreciate that. And then, the learner qualities, I had a question about those. So, will it still be a numeric grade? Or, has that changed? Okay.
We have yet to solve that problem.
Okay. But I do see that the honor roll requirements have changed, and that was not put in. Learner qualities doesn't play into honor roll requirements, from what I can see.
It was up needed to reflect the changes that aligned the secondary grading policy.
Excellent. Thank you.
Additional questions? Comments on the curriculum? Lisa?
I just want to acknowledge to Andrew Spaz that I had given him some feedback a couple of years ago about the photographs used and representation of our district and students' colors, students' varying abilities. And I want to note that I really appreciate the photos that you selected and how inclusive the program looks this year. So, thank you.
Thank you for telling us that.
Craig.
On the student internship program. Are we?
Go ahead.
Kids reaching those hours?
The 60 hours, yes, that's a requirement.
No, are they reaching them? I mean, we had something similar in the past. So, the 60 and the 120?
Yes, students are reaching the 60 hours and the 120 hours. It's required for, in order for them to receive that credit.
And, for the most part, 100%, or?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, fantastic.
Yep.
Further questions from the committee? Okay, those in favor of approving the Charahoe High School Program of Studies? It looks unanimous. Thank you.
Next, Mr. McKenzie and Ms. Spaz will provide an update on the status of the XQ Rhode Island Planning Grant Proposal. And I do recommend. And I do recommend approval of the letter of support, there is a draft copy in the Package.
Motion and a second to approve a letter of support. Discussion.
I just want to clarify this right up front, it's not identified as a page, but on the Budget part, alright? So on WBL Coordinator and the line after, ninth grade advisory, et cetera, they're showing Down the line, some out of our finances.
That's correct.
Some finances, I just want people to realize, I mean, one of them, year three, a hundred Four thousand dollars out of our budget. I'm not trying to deter, but with what we're going through right now.
Interested.
Thank you.
Thank you. Why, turn it over to you to walk us through the update.
Craig, just, you know, we're gonna start kind of giving the overview, and then we Can talk about the budget specifics for sure. So, this is work that started over a year ago, kind of an extension of a lighthouse Grant that we applied for three years ago, where we started to really refine our vision For our school, and the place where we wanted to focus our attention in support of Vision Two thousand twenty-three, the district strategic plan was on what we can do to create a really Strong foundation for students in our school, and understanding that if in those first Two years, we really do our due diligence in terms of explicit training, and experiential Learning, and applied learning, and helping kids to understand the professional and academic Dispositions they need to be successful, that we're gonna give students responsibility And opportunities to apply those skills that they learn as they move towards the end Of their high school experience. So, one of the stats that really jumped out at us was always this, if a student fails One class as a freshman, they're three and a half times less likely to graduate with Their class, so a lot of the proactive piloting that we've been doing over the course of The last two years has been about what can we do, again, as part of the Vision two thousand Twenty-three, to ensure that a hundred percent of our freshmen pass a hundred percent of Their classes, to ensure that they stay on track to graduate. And there's some of that implementation from the district strategic plan right there. So, if you hadn't heard, we're building a ladder to learner autonomy, and in doing So, we are saying that if we provide students with really explicit skill training, stop Assuming anything about students come into, and coming into our ninth grade. One of the things that we know is over twenty percent of our students are coming from other School districts, so we have to kind of understand who they are as they walk in the door. The other eighty percent obviously coming either from charter schools in the area, Or coming from Charahoe Middle School, and our charge is to get them acclimated to the Academic, cultural, and behavioral expectations of our community as quickly as possible. A lot of what we've designed in our ladder to learner autonomy says that we are not Gonna make assumptions about things that students know or understand or are able to Do, but we're gonna provide explicit training, proactive supports, we're gonna try to consolidate Our support resources, so that no one falls through the cracks, and so that all the stakeholders Involved in the experience, especially in those first two years, and in ninth grade In particular, build a foundation for students to be increasingly self-directed, and I can Think about it in a really explicit example where, say for example, the first time you're In a ninth grade class, maybe you need to be taught and explained the roles and responsibilities That you play in a collaborative project where you're working in a group, whether It's a recorder, or someone who's gonna be the facilitator, the person who's gonna be Reported out, and we do that very explicitly in ninth grade, but as we move through each One of the grade levels, we start making valid assumptions about what students can Do, because we've trained them to do that, and students take increasingly responsive, Increasing amounts of responsibility for taking on roles, for determining who can Do what in small group work, towards senior experiences, which you could see if you came Into the high school, where students are taking complete responsibility for their Learning, and teachers are playing the roles of facilitators, they're providing resources, They're providing a sense of guidance, they check in with students, but students are Really driving the whole learning, and that's our goal for all of our students, because That's, as many of you know, is the expectation when they go on to post-secondary, or when They go out into the world of work, when they go into the military, there's really Clear expectations about what it means that they have to do. So, our big ideas for our school redesign was redesigning that ninth grade, really thinking About how we could ensure that all students had a strong foundation, that if there were Equity gaps in terms of ability, in terms of access to resources, whether it was socioeconomic, Whether it was because of cultural differences or biases, whether it was because they came From school systems where there were gaps in their learning, or because they moved From, through a number of different, or had experiences, it created gaps in their learning, We're gonna try to close those gaps as quickly as possible. Work-based learning is, is our kind of a tenth grade focus for what we're proposing To do, particularly in our advisory, where again, we're gonna train students to explicit Professional dispositions and skills, how to create a quality resume, so that there's Consistency in terms of what it is students putting out, how do you proceed in an interview? How do you dress? When do you use your cellphone when you're in a workplace environment? How do you have a conversation with adults? How do you pitch and advocate for yourself if you're trying to get a job? Getting your work papers in order, making sure that you had job shadow experience, so That you could understand what you imagine a job to be really is, whether it's for a Couple hours or a half day, towards students being increasingly ready to take on and feeling Confident in taking on self-directed learning experiences like independent study or internship. Our imagined experiences are a product of an experience that I had at Duke a year ago, Where I walked down the campus for the first time, and the first thought I had was, I know If our students went to that school and walked on that campus, that they could imagine Themselves being there, and that's the first step in students being motivated to achieve At the highest levels, and so we'll talk a little bit about some of those experiences. And immersion experiences, again, tying back to Vision two thousand twenty-three, we're Becoming increasingly global as a society, and we have to prepare our students to thrive In environments outside of their comfort zone. We're a fairly geographically isolated community, we're ten percent of the entire state of The Rhode Island in terms of the size of our district, and some of the messaging that Our students have provided is that in some ways, they're stuck physically, they're isolated From each other, and from the opportunities to access experiences that we as a school Have to provide for them, whether they're locally, or regionally, or internationally. So, kind of an overview of the bullet points in ninth grade redesign, ninth grade teaming, We've done teaming before, but we're really trying to lock in to make sure that our teachers Have common planning time that allows them to work collaboratively, we're talking about Dedicating a school counselor, like one point two school counselors specifically to The ninth grade class, so there's continuity in terms of the communication between the School counselors and the teachers and support personnel. We've already piloted some proactive supports with students, a good example is providing Students the opportunity in ninth grade, if they fail in quarter one or in quarter Three, giving them the opportunity to go into credit recovery and build up that grade, So that that forty percent doesn't drag them down compared to the other forty percent Of their grade for a semester in quarter two, and the twenty percent of their major Course assessment. Again, trying to mitigate that idea of students failing during their freshman year. Specific academic skill and disposition training, leadership training, we piloted A peer mentoring program, that's an extension of the district mentoring program this year, We've got twenty-two trained mentors that were trained by Pushukla, who is the mentoring Coordinator for the district, and, and piloted them, working with not only middle school, Middle school students, but also with ninth grade students as well. And working on things that help students in ninth grade feel more connected to our School community, the young ladies with their UNICEF club is a great example, we hold The data, forty-nine percent of our ninth graders are not actively involved in an extracurricular Activity, that includes sports and all the extracurricular clubs, and we've gotta build That number up in the face of what we know is a challenge, which is that many of our Students have to get on a bus and go home at the end of the day, because they're from Ascending districts. The peer mentors are also charged with helping support that transition from eighth to ninth Grade, so they're gonna be working in the spring, going over and messaging to students At middle school about what they can expect, they're gonna be an integral part of the Touring that we do with eighth grade students during the spring, as they transition, and There'll be an integral part of our new student orientation as well, so that when the need arises for peer mentoring, there's already a familiar face.
What we've also noticed with the transition from eighth to ninth is just letting students Know of the expectations for what it means to earn academic credit here at the high School, eighth graders coming to us don't necessarily know what it means to earn credit, And that if you, you needed so many credits in order to graduate, so really emphasizing, You know, how important it is to pass all of your required courses, and, you know, we're Working on having students help with that messaging as well, some of our upperclassmen Message that to our underclassmen.
Talked a little bit about work-based learning and our goals, tenth grade advisory, There's gonna be pushing with our work-based learning coordinator to, to really train Students in collaboration with some of our community partners, including Tri-Town Community Action Agency, to really train students, give them explicit training in professional Dispositions and skills, and give them the opportunity to practice. One of the anchors of what we're trying to do, particularly in ninth grade, but also In, in this tenth grade advisory with the professional dispositions as well, is this Idea of challenging students to show, provide evidence that they've applied what they've Learned, whether it's through journaling, through evidences that they end up building Into their portfolio, that say, not only were you there when this training took place, Whether it was in the classroom or out in the workforce, but you took something away From it that's meaningful and tangible as you move forward. Updating internship materials to align with our vision, so that there's a little Bit more flexibility, we've piloted some examples where students who were at risk Of dropping out, for example, that we gave them one of their days in the green and white Day schedule, to just go work at a job that spoke to their interest, or what they wanted To do when they get out of school, and using their investment in that job as a lever to Make sure that they completed the credits that they needed to get their high school Diploma. It's also a potential, that speaks to an intervention, but that's also a potential Reward for a student who does all the right things during their first few years of school, And is looking for something personal and meaningful to do at the end of their high School experience, as you know, you only have twenty-four credits that you have to Earn to get a diploma, you have twenty-eight opportunities, so those four credits represent A full semester of work that could be applied learning experiences, whether you're pursuing A passion through an independent study, or whether you're pursuing a job opportunity And building your resume through an internship experience. Aligning our courses to our work-based learning hours, this was particularly important Because in our accountability measures for the state, in terms of how we're rated as A school, work-based learning hours are a critical component, so we're trying to identify In every single one of our disciplines, not just in our career and technical center programs, But in all of our disciplines, opportunities for students to, to gain work-based learning Hours towards validating the great work that we're doing at the school, and validating And increase, increase, excuse me, the value of their high school diploma. And I have to recognize tonight, they couldn't be here, but Kim Stack, who is, and Frank Hopkins, who are two community network champions, who have done just unbelievable work since We received the grant last spring, trying to bring together and build our network of Community partners, whether it be in post-secondary institutions around the state, Kim works directly In development at URI, or in our industry partners as well, working through Charahoe Rotary, and the unbelievable connections that both Frank and Kim have, we're building Resources so that we can provide students the opportunities that we're gonna try to Put in front of them, it'd be terrible if we said, we're trying to get you out there For job shadows and internships, and then didn't have the connections to make that happen For them.
Something that we're really excited about are these imagined experiences that we Are providing with our students, a lot of this is Craig's vision come to life here, You can see some pictures up here of, these are actually our freshmen who go, who went To college, which is very exciting, we're looking to do this for our freshmen, to expose Them to the college experience, so the post-secondary piece, we're also looking to expose our Students to professional opportunities in terms of exploring the industries as well. This next slide here, you can see, these were the thirteen opportunities that students Were able to visit post-secondary institutions throughout the state, it was a very fun-filled, Packed day, where students were able to be exposed to an opportunity that they had not Been exposed to before, we have some data on the next slide here, that kind of walks You through some of this, so after they came back from visiting college campuses throughout Rhode Island, we had them, we surveyed our students, we had two hundred and five responses, Seventy-two percent of our students told us this was their first time ever being like Exposed to a college campus, or participating in a college tour, and eighty-nine percent Indicated they would now like to go visit other colleges, which is great to see that This early in their high school career, they're gaining this interest. We also had them summarize in one word how they felt about today's trip, in terms of The experience, and as you can see, those are some words that popped up, this is what, We call this an answer garden, so the largest words are the words that came up most frequently, So a lot of them found it interesting, amazing, informative, educational, eye-opening, exciting, Inspiring, cool, epic, we like epic, enjoyable, so those are, you know, that's what we were Hoping to gain from this experience, to really give them something that, that was eye-opening, And expose them to something new, and, and really let them imagine themselves in that Set, that type of environment.
So, in terms of immersion experiences, there's a few things, we're a very homogeneous Community, but understanding diversity and, and developing your cultural confidence Is a critical part of the high school experience, and in the absence of racial diversity in Our community, or in our school community, we do have unbelievable immersion opportunities In the Native American community, so we started working very closely with the Tomahawk Museum, Starting with some professional development that we did through Silver Moon La Rose at The beginning of the year as part of our professional development, that translated Into our social studies department doing a CPT up at Tomahawk, so they can understand A little bit more about the resources and the stories, that they could build in and Take advantage of the opportunities to build the, the powerful story of our Native American Community here at home in Charahoe into our curriculum in as many ways as possible. Silver Moon's really extended her reach just in a very short period of time, she's mentored And interviewed every single one of the Native American students in our school, given Us feedback on how it is that we can improve service to our students, and she's created A couple of clubs, most recently, they did an unbelievable jewelry-making session after School, working with the arts department through a grant that Dana was critical in Writing. Again, we're going forward, we need to acknowledge and, and promote the great things and the Cultural diversity within our community itself. Beyond that, the, the next great experience that we did during the fall this year, and It was really something that we kind of fell into as a part of our XQ grant, we were Talking about this idea of imagined experiences, and as a part of a collaboration in one Of our design meetings, we were paired up with Hope High School, and the immediate Thought was, let's do this thing together and see what it looks like. So, Hope identified thirteen students that they wanted, from all grade levels, that They wanted this experience for, we identified thirteen students from our school, we went Up to URI first, talked about with a panel discussion of students at URI, what it is Like living and learning in, on a URI campus, and things that students need to keep in Mind and think about as they move towards that experience, we toured the campus, ate Lunch over there, talked to some admissions advisors, and then as closure to that, we Invited the Hope students to come down and just shadow our students for a block in our Classes, tour our campus a little bit, and reflect on what they saw here, and then we Reciprocated, we went up to Brown University together, same group, toured Brown's campus, Met with some alumni who, from Charahoe and from Hope, who talked about their experiences At Brown, and then spent some time shadowing the students at Hope. Again, I think it's really critical for our students to understand what living and Learning looks like in different environments, and, and in the absence of the diverse experiences That maybe would be available in an urban setting, or in a suburban setting that maybe Were more accessible, we have to try to create those experiences for our students. So, I gave you the local, the regional, and then the international, obviously you know That we've established a sister relationship with Number One High School in Lu Young, those Students are coming to visit us, starting next Tuesday at one o'clock, I hope you all Got our invitation, we'd love to have you here in the library to welcome that group. This is the first step in a number of sister school relationships that across disciplines In our school, we're trying to build right now, to foster our students having the opportunity To learn about cultures by having students and teachers come to us, and by reciprocating And moving internationally to try to have those experiences for our students as well. So, our grants due on the thirteenth, if we get the grant, and we love to win, so We believe very strongly that we're gonna get it, we put so much work into it, and we Do understand, and because we've kind of been through this process before, where a Grant, and it was a lighthouse grant, really helped us to refine and define our vision For our school, we know that whether or not we get the grant, we're really clear on what It is that we want for our students and our teachers and our school community, and We know that we can implement. can implement components of this regardless of where you get the money or not. But we know we're going to get it.
We're going to win.
So phased implementation takes place over the course of three years, and like I said, I'm glad to talk about some of the financials in terms of how I envision it.
Thank you, thank you. I open this up for discussion. Clay?
Three sort of random points. I had a meeting very recently with a town planner that had just moved to the area, and she made the comment that she thought this area was very diverse. She was immediately challenged on the racial diversity component. She said, "Oh, I wasn't talking about that." So I think there's a lot of diversity that your students will find when they look around. Point two, Kim Stack is a great resource to connection to URI. She's also the incoming chair to the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce, so she's a great connection to the local business community. And three, I love the vision, I love the boldness, I like the reset for expectations at ninth grade, it's a nice point to do it. Is there any component to that that talks about anti-bullying or bystander training or anything like that in terms of expectations?
I'd almost have to go get my phone, because one of the things that we did was we bulleted a list with the ninth graders. Our vision is to take our advisory, and originally it was to turn that into an actual class taught by a certified teacher. Budgetarily, I don't think that's very realistic, but that 1.0, that certified staff member that's built into the budget in our grant, and that eventually would become a part of our school community if we felt like this really translated into results for our kid, is a push-in to advisories where they're going to be providing explicit training in, I could just give you a laundry list here, learner qualities, study skills, summer study acculturation to expectations, study strategy training, adult communication training, conflict resolution, bystander intervention, portfolio expectations, accountability partnering, ILP design training, responsible use of technology, executive function and time management training, access to supports, diversity training and immersion experiences, post-secondary Imagine Experiences, course-specific school counselors, CPT, credit recovery plans, evidence of application journal, extracurricular engagement challenge, portfolio benchmark presentations, navigating Canvas and Power School, engaging stakeholders, parents and support, and self-progress monitoring and application training. So we've gone through this, and you had to think about this over the course of a year, and various committees sitting down together and saying, "What is it that we're assuming that kids have when they walk into our school that we just can't assume anymore?" And those are, that's my laundry list, it's a start, really, of academic skills and dispositions that we need to be more explicit in our training of. We've got a similar laundry list related to professional skills and dispositions as they move farther into their high school experience.
Catherine?
This is very exciting. I think, you know, there's a phrase, "You can't parent for the world that you grew up in because it's not that world anymore." And I think we can't educate the way that we were all necessarily all educated because it's not that way anymore. I look at my three children, and I don't know that the traditional setting is right for all three of them. And so I start to look outside of Cherahoe to see, is there an opportunity somewhere else for my children? And things like this make me realize that you're, we, as a community, are making really great strides to try to capture all of those kids. You know, we do have a diverse population in terms of learners' needs, and I love how you hit upon the fact that you can't, you can't assume that even our, even our incoming eighth graders from Cherahoe Middle School are necessarily coming with the same skillset that we would have expected we would have had. So this is, this is great to see, and I, and I hope you get that grant, and we can implement the whole kid.
One of the interesting epiphanies when we realized that the interventions for our students who struggled to acculturate academics in our school were also the incentives that we were creating for the high-achieving students in our school.
Bill?
I'm also impressed with this. One of the questions I did have, after your presentation, you were focusing a lot on colleges, and I'm not opposed to that, I'm just wondering, as ninth graders, do we have enough resources or enough forward-looking individuals to maybe try to steer these students, college, future college students into jobs that will be available? Because I mean, there are so many individuals who go to colleges that are taking courses that there's really not, not a high demand for them, and they're leaving college with a lot of debt and not a great possibility of getting a job in the areas that they've spent four hard years to achieve a degree in.
I would take, and I think it's a little bit of my messaging, I get Roland, you know how I am, Bill, I can't really stop, but I think one of the things that we message, and we just talked to the ninth graders today in our midsemester meetings as they kind of prepare for scheduling their classes, our goal is really that students graduate from Cherahoe with as many choices as possible. Eighty percent of that freshman class is enrolled in a CTC course right now, and it's one of the gaps that we identified, and it's not a true gap, but we've got 72% of our students enrolled in CTC, only 7% of our students are enrolled in self-directed learning experiences like our entrepreneurial class or our internships or our independent studies. And if we're doing a better job of helping students to be self-directed and pursue their passions, and I can throw out 20 examples of amazing kids who are doing just the kind of thing that we're trying to do, that gap is going to close incrementally. It should be closer to, and I know there are some challenges related to that, but it still should be closer to like a 20% gap than a 60% gap.
And our immersion and Imagine Experiences also address industry and post-secondary options, be it whether it's college or career. So we definitely want to expose students to those industry sectors as well and those industry opportunities.
Given the National Guard was one of the sites, it was the Training Academy, because we want to expose kids to the opportunities that the military is a great place to get an education as well as to get specific training.
All right, Craig, and then Clay.
This is budget season. I already brought the subject up.
I'm all good.
So from what I understand from your chart here, year two, we pay nothing. I mean, year one, we pay nothing. Year two, we pay 41,675. Year three is 145,862. We're a total of our commitment of 187,537. Can you explain the additional XQ resources needed and where that funding is coming from?
Yeah, so a couple things. The $43,000 or 41,675, that's that work-based learning coordinator, point four at step six, that's in your budget already. So I'm going to save you $46,000 this year by getting it into my dream. And then after that, it's going to be back in the budget.
Okay.
See, I just paid you some money.
Well.
You're going to need it in a second. So the push-in, again, and I told you, my original plan was to try to create certified positions for the ninth grade advisory. I was going to solve all kinds of great problems for me, but it's really not cost-effective. So what we're planning to do is get one certified teacher to do push-in instructional training in all of the freshman advisories over the course of a couple of years. If two years after we implement our plan and we see that we're getting results, I think that's a really challenging decision that I have to make. If I value a 1.0 in that position enough to say, "Where can I take that from somewhere else?" But I think we make those decisions as administrators at the district and at the school level just about every year. Sometimes it happens as a result of personnel retirement, sometimes it happens as a result of increases or decreases in the number of students who come into the building, but in some cases, I have to say, we've created a program here that has enough value that I have to give value for that.
So once we commit, are we locked in? We're having that discussion now with some things on our budget, so I'm just asking.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I don't, I don't think, I think budgets are year-to-year. You know, in my dreams, we're in big surplus three years from now, but I don't know that that's going to happen. What I do know is that I've got built into the grant for the next two years, that 1.0 position to push in, to do that explicit training that I just described. And if it, if one of the things that could come out of it is that we build capacity in all the people that are advisors and freshman advisory, but it's still, there's instructional responsibilities involved in that position that right now are just a duty for those who supervise advisory, so I have to be very careful about what that looks like.
I personally would just, I mean, first, I'm on board, but I don't want to commit. And then two years from now, we're kind of second-guessing ourselves because we're scared by that year's budget.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I guess the only thing I could say, kind of going back to the work-based learning, I think we value creating those applied learning experiences enough for our students, and in my early conversations with Barry about it, that we built that into the budget and that didn't get pulled out initially when the 2.4 certified staff did. I've got it in the budget, in my grant budget. So for example, maybe you're going to decide that we can't do it with the point four that's already in there, maybe that is getting cut. I'm going to have to find a way to support that, whether it's building capacity in my faculty and staff, in building capacity in the person who right now is the internship coordinator to take on some of those responsibilities, but I feel strongly enough about the vision that we have for those, and I'm willing to take a couple of years to see if I value it enough to try to find a place where I can move that. And it might be at the expense of something else that maybe we valued before, but we don't value.
Thank you. Clay?
So one comment on the business community, it's very tempting to want to take students and go see a building, go see URI or Carousel Industries. South County is a bedroom community, the state is a bedroom community. There's a lot of people here, CEOs, that are running global companies that are very exciting for students to see, that might be virtual offices. So I encourage you to find some way to engage with that community also.
Absolutely. I think one of the great resources that we found is the Rhode Island Student Loan Association has a whole brochure, it's actually like, almost like a little magazine, but it's got really explicit training and expectations that we plan to work with Tri-Town Community Action Committee, our agency, just to kind of think about what that curriculum would look like and how we can, again, just like we're doing in our academic scaffold, that readiness to the point where students feel like, I want it to be their idea to go out into the community and job shadow. I want, I want it to get the same kind of buzz that students were speaking with when they talked about the freshman class going to college, so that it's, who's, who is it that you're going to shadow, and what is it that you're imagining doing, and what was that like? Is that something that I want to do towards that more structured experience, which is the internship? But yeah, definitely, I think, I think, again, given where we are regionally, the idea of doing something virtual has a lot of financial.
Further discussion, questions for everybody? Okay, we have motion in a second to approve approval of the letter of support. Those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you both, appreciate it. Letter G.
Okay, so you have a letter in your packet that it's been, it's a revision to the one that was submitted in November with the Richmond DEM grant. The reason for the revision is that we got a call and feedback from the person who we provided the grant application to, and they gave us some additional information. One was that if the grant is awarded, we cannot charge fees to non-town residents for use of the Richmond recreational facilities if we do not charge town residents. If we charge town residents, we can't charge non-town more than twice these fees. So this would require a slight change to our policy, but I would hold off on that until we find out if the grant's awarded. And that's why when I spoke with them, they would accept a letter of our support, of the school committee's support versus a change in the policy, that if we were to be awarded the grant, then we would change the use of school facilities policy to reflect that information. One added piece of information, we did research usage of the Richmond field and how much money we have collected for that usage since FY '17, so the last four years, and it's been $200. So in FY '17, we actually charged $200 for a tournament for an outside group. Since then, it's been used, but it's only been used by town groups, and there's been no fees collected in the last three years.
So you recommend approval?
So I recommend approval of this letter of support for the Richmond DEM Recreation Development Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the revisions to the letter to the DEM discussion. Catherine?
So on the agenda is just a discussion about this piece, not about the use of school facilities policy as a whole, correct?
Well.
And I'm fine with that. I think, I think that's how I'm reading it, how, so I had questions about that, but I don't think it's appropriate for me to voice those questions now, because we're not really talking about that school use policy, correct?
Well, no, correct. So the approval is just of the revision of this letter. However, this letter includes charging for use of facilities, so if you have a specific aspect of that that you're questioning, I mean, I'll let it in.
Yeah, I'm.
If it's something else, then I'm going to say.
I don't know that it's germane to the conversation.
Okay. Bill?
My understanding is this DEM grant will only affect the west side of the school facilities, the tennis court, pond area, basketball area, which is, I'm sure was not the part of the $200. I'll be, I can't say this for sure, but I'm sure it was $200 that's gone into the softball field on the east side of the school, and that would not be part of this DEM grant.
The softball field is not part of the DEM grant.
Further discussion? Those in favor of approving the revisions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Letter H.
Letter H, recommend approval to submit a request for variance for the 2020-2021 school year from the requirement which stipulates that bus monitors must be provided on all buses transporting students in grades K to five. This request only applies to secondary bus runs. So we're, we're really just requesting a variance for grade five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the request for a variance. Discussion? You're right.
So I read the agenda item, and I did read the piece of paper, the letter in the packet. I still want to clarify, so this variance would allow that buses that carry kids in grade five all the way up to potential high school kids to run without bus monitor on the floor. Right?
Right. Grade six through 12, a bus monitor's not required.
So we're adding fifth grade kids to that.
We currently do bus students in grades five through 12 on the same buses because they come here to the campus. So what this variance allows us to do is not to have the monitor, since we now have, we do have fifth graders on those buses, and we've been doing it for years. So it's not anything new.
Why are we putting it now, then?
I believe it's annual requirement to.
Drive requires it annually.
To request for the variance.
Drive requires it annually.
You okay?
I'm going to vote against.
Okay. Clay?
I'm good. Jane already clarified that this has been happening for years, and I just wanted that on the record.
Yeah, no, I agree, me too. Any further discussion on the approval of the variance? No, those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thanks, Barry. All right, this brings us to letter I. So this is an opportunity for further discussion on the budget. Yeah, I know. Wait in the evening, all right. So why don't just a brief recap of the impact from the governor's budget on ours and what that looks like, and we can maybe kick-start the discussion from there?
Try it and jump in if I'm wrong. Or do you want to do it?
Whatever you like.
So you have in your FYI the governor's recommended education aid, and the impact in our budget right now is when you look at the excess special education cost reimbursement from what we have in our budget compared to what's in the governor's budget, that increased slightly by $14,889.
slightly by $14,889. The transportation categorical aid actually had an increase from what we budgeted, and so it's a $73,338 increase. However, the bad news is that the regional bonus aid for the private transportation, we had a decrease of $62,677. So, overall, it ends up with an increase of $25,550 of revenue. And so, that's more funds coming in than what we had put in our budget of, again, a total of $25,550.
Thank you. Linda?
I don't know. I guess the towns usually come and request that the transportation aid be increased because it's always cut. Am I correct on that? So, is that the same one that, or am I getting confused?
No, the, actually, the transportation categorical aid for being regional.
Sure.
Actually increased. So, it did increase over last year.
Okay.
By $73,338.
Oh, okay.
It's the private transportation.
Oh, when students go.
For students that attend private school.
Okay.
That's the one that decreased. So, they almost balance each other out. Bless you.
Thank you. Yes, we're ahead.
Catherine?
I had made a request at the last meeting, and I apologize, I didn't clarify it well enough for you. What I was looking for were recommendations for another $1 million worth of cuts in addition to the cuts that we've already made. So, I'd like to ask to see that, I think we've heard from the town councils, and certainly in the case of Hopkinton, if we don't make some more substantial cuts, they are going to go over that 4% increase. And I think that's burdensome for taxpayers and everybody else, we're all taxpayers. So, I, if you could prepare at your convenience, recommendations for about $1 or $1.2 million in cuts, and if you could tell me, if we were to find those cuts somewhere and cut that down, what that would do for the impact overall percentage-wise, I would appreciate it.
Sure. If we were to have an overall increase of 2% for the budget, which would mean for Hopkinton, a 3.96% increase, so that's under the 4. For Charlestown, it would actually be 0. And for Richmond, it would be 1.44% increase. And again, all of that difference is because of the difference in enrollment for each of the towns. Then that would mean cutting a little under 1.2 million in addition to what we've already cut.
Okay.
Craig, and then Clay, and then Bill.
I just wanted you to be specific on that. Inclusive to what we've cut or additional?
In addition to what we've cut.
So, anywhere from 1 to 1.5 in addition to what we've cut?
She said 1.2.
1.2 is what I was looking for.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, I would like to ask you, Catherine, to also clarify, are you including any change in the reserve fund in that, or is that outside the reserve?
Originally, when I had asked, I had, I had suggested taking the unfunded liability or unfunded.
Fund balance.
Balance, thank you, to 2.5%. So, if you can do that. But again, I'm leaving some of that up to your discretion, because you know better than I do where you can find funds.
Bill?
I think Catherine has made a valuable request. I'm looking here at what we're proposing to transfer here tonight, the $159,000. And the transfer of funds, 2020 school committee meeting, 121. So, there is money that's being bounced around here all over the place to cover other things. So, I think that maybe they need to be a little bit tighter, look at some of the money and what we're taking money out of one account and putting in other accounts to pay bills.
Understood your comment. Craig?
I'm just going to ask Sue a question, so we all hear the answer again, if that's okay.
Yeah, have it. Sue doesn't want to hear it.
Health costs this year.
Surprisingly.
Well, behind the eight ball by about $300,000.
Yes.
If that continues to June 30th, how does that affect us next year? Well, with fund surplus, fund balance.
We have a fund balance right now at WB, and right now, our fund balance has been able to cover that, that $300,000, and could continue to cover for the next few months. However, that would deplete the fund balance at WB, so we would be starting off with an 8% increase next year in our rates, but nothing to really fall back on.
I'm just throwing that.
Catherine?
Yeah. No, I understand that impact. What I'm hearing from members of Hopkinton's town council and other community people is they want to automatically see us bring the fund balance down to 2%. My argument against that is then you have less money next year to offset the budget. I'm also uncomfortable reducing the fund balance to 2% and cutting what we've put in for increases for healthcare. I don't think that's a wise move. You get one bad claim, and all of a sudden, all of your WB credit is gone, and now you're looking at taking money out of that fund balance, which is why it's there. So, I, that's why I made the recommendation the way that I did.
I want to just clarify that the, in the proposed budget, the fund balance as it stands right now accounts for certain aid from the state, right?
Ask that question again?
The current fund balance as it states in the current budget, the proposed budget, in the budget, we also have the state aid.
The state aid is included in the revenue line?
Right.
The fund balance that we've, the 3% that's left is included a couple of sections down on that cover page. They're in two completely different sections.
No, 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 I understand, but when you count, you expect certain money, certain amount of money to come from the state.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that would affect the revenue line. If it comes at less than in the budget.
The governor's proposed budget?
Right. Then automatically, we would have to dip into the fund balance. So, I understand the desire to use that little saving that we have, but personally, I feel, I don't feel comfortable pushing the fund balance down to the 2% even. I would like it to keep at 2 and 1/2.
You know, within this proposal of looking at additional 1.2 million in cuts, I think it's, it would behoove us to just encourage the administration to come back with, you know, where those cuts can be made and with and without addressing reductions in the fund balance. And then the committee will then decide whether or not, you know, those cuts are appropriate or if we want to adjust the fund balance to offset some specific cuts or however we decide. Yes, sir.
So, reduction to 2% in the fund balance will be included in the presentation?
It, it's, well, we already know the numerical impact. What I would recommend is that the administration looks at achieving the 1.2 million reduction that, that's been asked with and without reducing the fund balance.
To 2%?
With respect to that, is there any additional discussion on fiscal year '21 budget? Same. Yes, sir.
The last budget meeting that we have had last week, I know I made some suggestions whether, or maybe observations, rather. So, I don't know, and I know they weren't well received, but I'm going to stay the same, the same wave, if you will. So, maybe if you're looking at measures this strict, cutting, not increasing the budget, but cutting by that much, maybe it's worth looking in at our classes. I mean, I looked at the, the classes we just approved, the program of study for the high school, its mass, and I'm sure most of these classes are superior, and they are great, and kids love them. And I don't know how it's going to pertain to the, you know, teacher's contract and whatnot. I don't want to cut any positions, but maybe we can optimize some, and maybe there's some savings there. I'm not a school administrator, I'm not a teacher, I don't know the details, but some enrollment numbers may be just too low to keep that class. I don't know. I'm just asking, maybe school can look at that and see if there is some optimization ways there.
I think that the administration is going to definitely start there. I mean, they have to find that, that number somewhere. So, I'm looking forward to seeing what proposals are made and whether or not this committee is willing to move down that pathway. Additional comments on?
Just to clarify, you're looking for an additional 1.2 million dollars in cuts?
The task before the administration is to propose to us 1.2 million dollars in additional cuts with and without the, reducing the fund balance to 2% as being part of that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. If there are no further comments on letter I, then this moves us to consent agenda items, and I would like A1, A2, and A3 hold.
A3, please.
All right. So, 2, 3, and A6. Thank you.
F1?
A5 as well, sorry, and then F1. I know we're pulling everything.
Oh, you said 5?
Yeah, I got to pull 5 as well. I was.
Okay.
I didn't make that. So, a bunch of workshops.
You're going to do it?
You can do it.
F1. Any?
I add to it.
What?
Just second it.
Okay. Wait a minute, I'm confused. Are you pulling F1?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Ready?
Okay.
Chair, I make a motion to move, before I move the remainder, I'd like to acknowledge K1, a donation from Linda Lawrence of Charleston, Rhode Island, of one sunfish sailboat valued at $450, and a sunfish sailboat rigging valued at $200 to the CTC Marine Tech Program. So, I move the remainder.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second to move the remainder of consent agenda items. Those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Chair, I make a motion to approve A1 executive session minutes of December 10th, approval of executive session minutes of November 26, 2019, and NEA ESP contract update.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the executive session minutes, December 10th, 2019. Any discussion on that? Those in favor? Abstaining? That would be me.
And Marat, did you abstain?
No, I think I was here.
Okay. You're voting in favor, then?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair, I make a motion to approve A2, executive session minutes of December 10th, 2019, resolution of Open Meetings Act litigation.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the executive session minutes of December 2nd. Any discussion on that? I see none. Those in favor? Those abstaining? Yeah. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve A3, regular session minutes of December 10th, 2019.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve regular session minutes, December 10th, 2019. Any discussion on that? Those in favor? Those abstaining? Perfect. That covers all of those.
Okay. Number 5, right?
Yeah, number 5.
Chair, I make a motion to approve A5, budget workshop minutes of January 7th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second to approve minutes of January 7th. Any discussion on that? Those in favor? Those abstaining? Catherine? Thank you.
Chair, I make a motion to approve A6, omnibus meeting minutes of January 8th, 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve omnibus meetings, minutes, those, any discussion? Sorry. Those in favor? Those abstaining?
Abstained.
Thank you.
Chair, I make a motion to approve F1 personnel actions.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve acceptance of the resignation request. Discussion? Yes, sir.
I'm just confused by one thing. He resigned on September 11th, and this is happening effective now. I'm just confused by that.
He, the letter was written September 11th, but submitted on, for, to be brought to the school, to a school committee meeting. So, it would be accepted effective of the date of the meeting. And I know there was a change in the law and that now we're not bringing appointments to the school committee, but he was specifically given information that it would be brought to the school committee. So, it's a little bit of stuck in the transition period with the new law, and that's why we brought it forward.
Okay. I was just confused, that's all. Thank you.
Any further discussion on F1? Those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Reports.
So, subcommittee reports, the NEA ESP contract negotiation subcommittee will meet on Thursday, January 23rd, 2020, at noon in the administration building. The Director of Administration and Finance job description, you'll see that in your packet, it had been changed and revised in November, and I've revised it back to the original. And, you know, in consultation with others in the state, this Director of Administration and Finance job description is very typical with other districts. The other revised job description was posted briefly in December. We got no applicants. And it honestly was the passion of Superintendent Ritchie to really be, you know, hands-on with the facilities. And, you know, again, it's just not a typical approach with that position, and so I've switched it back to what it was before. Number 2, welcome reception for Chinese sister school students that are coming on January 28th at 1:00 PM at the high school library, and you're certainly all invited to attend. The Senate resolution reading for Mr. Ritchie. So, we got a call from the Senate, and on January 29th at 4:00 PM, they will be reading a resolution in his honor, and I've contacted the family, and I know that Mrs. Ritchie will be there, and certainly, if anyone else would like to attend, I also have told her I would attend with her, so. And coming events, we have the Richmond School Spelling Bee on January 22nd from 2:00 to 3:00 in the cafeteria. The high school improvement team meeting is on the 23rd at 2:30 in the high school library. The CALA comprehensive support and improvement team meeting will be on the 23rd also at 5:00 PM at CALA. On the 24th, elementary progress reports are issued. So, also at the secondary level, at the middle school and high school, the grading period ends. So, we're officially ending semester 1, and that's on the 24th. On the 24th, Charlestown School PTO spaghetti supper, 5:30 to 8:00. 28th, Charlestown School dental screenings, 9:00 to 11:00 AM. On January 29th, the high school college planning evening takes place at 6:30. January 31st, Charlestown School Rope Masters Assembly from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. On the 31st, we have the high school winter neon dance from 7:10 to 10:00 PM in the cafeteria. On the February 4th, Ashway School PTO meeting at 5:30 in the Ashway Library. On February 5th, the middle school, school improvement team meeting is at 3:30 in the library. And also on the 5th, the middle school spelling bee is in the auditorium from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It says snow day, but we're not going to talk about snow, so.
Okay. Thank you. Future agenda item requests or legal opinions? George?
I realize this might be already in our policy procedures, but I'd like a report from our medical professionals on the steps that would be taken in the event of a flu outbreak.
Okay. Additional requests from the committee?
Seeing as none, Chair, and if a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Does anybody want to discuss that? Those in favor? It is unanimous. I thank you all for the discussion tonight. It was a very heavy workload. I expect the next meeting to be heavy as well, but you got through it good time. Thank you all. Have a good.